Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Village of Hampton Hills. It is December 3rd, 7 o'clock PM. And roll call, please.
Trustee Botner?
Here.
Trustee Burson?
Here.
Trustee McElvy?
Here.
Trustee Mallett?
Present.
Trustee Muncy?
Present.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
President Warnicki.
Present. All right. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tom, will you lead us in the pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Okay, we'll move on to three, public comment.
There are none.
Okay. I do have a comment I'd like to make. Mike Terrell, would you like to rise? The Village of Hampton Hills would like to recognize Mike Terrell for donating over 200 hours of his time in designing, building, and installing our dais. It will be utilized with much appreciation by all current and future boards, committees, and police officers. So, thank you very kindly. Okay. Okay, anything to be removed from the consent agenda? What did I skip? No, not yet. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Not to be removed, but I'm wondering if we can move the executive session to the end of the meeting as we usually do.
That would be fine. We'll move executive session down to, after 9:00 A. Down to the bottom of the agenda. Okay, closed session. Okay, motion to move the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Janet. Second by Muncy. Roll call.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, good. Onto staff reports. I'd like to, because of the staff report, I'd like to recognize James Brown, our zoning commissioner, and he's just going to speak for a moment.
Yes, very briefly. I left two pieces of paper at each of your places. One is a correction to the zoning map. Came to my attention that parcel circled in red, the address is 39 West 596 Old Burlington Road, PIN 082410012. It's shown here in the zoning map as R1. It should have remained F for farming. The owner came and spoke to the commission on September 11th, a month before the public hearing. He preferred that his property remain F. We investigated, we subsequently spoke about it. The intention was that parcel should remain, should have remained F. And no public notice letter was sent out to him that this property was under consideration for rezoning. And this is just a miscommunication between me and my list and HR Green. I think what the GIS technician did, and probably when they're using their mouse to circle things, they included that with the rest of the subdivision which was being rezoned. So, that was never intended to be shown as R1 and should be F on the map. And in a conversation today with one of the trustees was suggested that I do an FAQ regarding other potential rezonings. I'll work on that and probably have it done by the end of the week.
Okay, any discussion or questions for James?
And specifically, trustee Botner and I have spoken extensively and then spoke to Jim Brown today when he was in the office. We need an FAQ going forward. The zoning map has made a lot of changes, a lot of improvements, but that doesn't mean it's perfect. There's, what did we think, 900 pins separate in the village?
It was like 4,000.
4,000, yeah. So, the fact that we could have all 4,000 exactly correct, it's just an expectation that we haven't achieved yet. We want a process in September every year to do a map amendment. And we'll do an FAQ explaining to the public if they have a question or challenge how they're zoned, how to do it, it won't cost them anything. We'll accumulate those as staff and have a map amendment. It could have one or it could have 101 changes to be considered by the board in a public hearing for the map amendment. And we try to do that on an annualized basis till we get to perfection. So, that'd be the process. Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
And when you do a map amendment, refresh my memory, that does, is a public hearing prior to that, correct?
There would be a public hearing after, showing what the staff has accumulated and recommending, and then there'd be a public hearing on every parcel that was going to be potentially amended. Yes.
Go ahead, Janet.
Is that a public hearing by the, I know we're going to get to the difference between the Plan Commission, ZBA, and Planning and Zoning Commission, but is that, is that a public hearing by what would have otherwise been the ZBA? Or is that just merely in front of the board?
For individual zoning map amendments would require public hearings before the ZBA and then a recommendation to the village board. If it's just a yearly review and updating or refreshing of the zoning map, that's not a public hearing. That's before the ZBA.
Plan, Plan Commission.
Plan Commission, please.
Well, wait, is it before the Plan Commission or before the board? Because...
Plan Commission for the yearly review, yeah.
Yeah.
But if it's an amendment to the zoning map, or I'm sorry, if it's a map amendment that goes before what is technically the ZBA, although you have a combined commission now.
So, to be precise, if we had one resident who had one parcel that was classified in error, we could all agree that it was in error, let's say hypothetically, and they were requesting that it be corrected, and everyone is in agreement that it should be corrected, does that go in front of the ZBA?
If the parcel's already identified with a particular zoning designation, typically it's a map amendment that goes before the ZBA if that owner is, property owner is requesting a change in zoning classification. If we're talking about errors or boundary issues, things like that, that were, that's typically done in the yearly review of the map, unless you'd agree on disagreeing.
Is the yearly, is the yearly review of the map necessarily different from bringing an issue before the Plan Commission? Because I'm assuming we wouldn't necessarily make amendments on a monthly basis or anything anyway.
No, those are usually just for, the yearly review is usually for housekeeping matters. And sometimes, a lot of communities, they don't, there is no change every year. It's just required to be done.
So correcting parcels that were somehow classified in error, is that a housekeeping matter?
Well, it depends on what you mean by error. So, if, you know, if, for instance, which seems to have occurred a lot in the past and was identified by the zoning commission this time around, communities, or not communities, developments were platted with residential subdivisions, but the underlying zoning was never changed from F to an R designation. Yes, is that, is that an error? Should that have been done 30 years ago? Sure. But to change that to a, to a residential zoning on an individual basis would require a map amendment. If they're just, you know, boundary issues, or if we had, you know, some errors that were caught on the map throughout the year, we could, we could change that on the yearly review.
And that yearly review would be done by the Plan Commission?
Plan Commission.
If that was a separate body?
Right, it just wouldn't require a public hearing.
Okay. And so, my understanding is that quite a number of the parcels that are, that might be in question today are cases where the map says it's an RE2 and it might be an RE1, or the map says it's an R2 and it might be an R1, or something like that, right? And, or vice versa. It goes both ways, as I understand it. But, but the resident is unlikely to come to us and say, please downgrade me.
Right.
Right? And so, so if a resident were to come to us and say, okay, my lot is big enough that it meets the, you know, qualifications for an RE3, but you have me classified as an R1, please classify me as an RE3. One of the things we've said in the past is there's no upward limit to what an R1 is. Correct? But if the resident feels that they would really feel better about being classified as an RE3, I think it has a better cachet. I think maybe it allows me some, something different under the zoning ordinance or whatever. They could ask us to, quote, fix that.
Correct. I mean, I think we'd have to review it on individual basis because a lot of it would also depend on probably the underlying zoning of the surrounding parcels. If you have one parcel that's surrounded by, let's say, R1s, but, you know, is, could, could meet the requirements for a larger zoning district, you know, that would be a different situation where you had four or five parcels in a row that were all surrounded by smaller parcels. So, I think, I wouldn't be able to answer that question unless, you know, we looked at a specific parcel, you know, on an individual basis. But I think when, when the requests came in throughout the year, zoning administrator could, could look at them and determine whether or not they would be something considered more of a housekeeping issue versus a formal map amendment that would be required.
So, a correction, if we could agree it was a correction, a correction would be a housekeeping issue. Someone who was saying, you have me classified as an R, but I really think I'm an F, would that, that would be more in the ZBA direction?
It more likely would be, right. And the only way that, the one, the reason why we were able to avoid a public hearing regarding each individual parcel this time around is because you're adopting a whole new map.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, President Warnicki. Question for Attorney Forte as well. In the same line of thinking as trustee Burson, but probably more in response to many of the concerns that we've, we've heard from some residents that have been brought to us, or at least me. We have changed some of the zoning uses to reflect zoning district instead of lot size in the 2024 ordinance. Some residents are concerned that if their lot size would have, have them in the estate districts, but their zoning district has them in the residential or even an R1 district, that they would not be allowed the number of animals, or number of horses, or other things that would be zoned or would be permitted based on zoning district instead of lot size. So, they have asked this question, and I believe the answer they have continued to get is something, something similar to, well, you could come to us and, and we would consider rezoning you. The answer that I've heard recently, just right now, is a little concerning that we would consider rezoning you, but it would depend on your neighbors, it would depend on a lot of things, not just your lot. So, I think some residents might still have a concern since we're changing from some uses, from lot size to zoning district. If they feel that they should be residential estate, but they're not, they're R1, how would they, if they came to you, how would that be considered by the village staff in, in the next six months or up to our next annual, you know, amendment, if you will?
Sure. And the meaning behind my statement that it would depend on the surrounding areas was really based on some of the discussions the zoning commission had when they were looking at changing large residential subdivisions from F to one of the R districts. And I know that, and it didn't happen often, but I, if I recall correctly, and Mr. Brown can correct me if I'm wrong, there were, there were some subdivisions that didn't have, let's say, uniform lot sizes. Most were of, let's say, an R, I can't remember what was what, R1, R2, R3, and then maybe there were just a couple more that were reflective of larger lot sizes. I think in, if I recall correctly, the, the overall idea was to kind of keep things uniform in a particular area, but there were instances where if there were, let's say, three or four lots contiguous to each other, maybe on the border of an R1, 2, 3 district, they might have been given an estate designation. So, my statement with regard to how it would affect the surrounding property owners, I guess it would be that if it were to change the use significantly, and it would be something that was different than what had, was already established as a use on that property. So...
I would like...
Go ahead, Janet.
I would like to underscore and agree with trustee Muncy's concern that I think we have to be very clear in what we're telling our residents as to whether the, the columns in the table, if you will, are based on lot size, or if they're based on classification. And, because this allows for significant gray area, and one of the things I think we're trying to reduce is gray area. And so, I think trustee Muncy has brought up an excellent point here that if I were, for example, zoned as an RE1, but I happened to have 1.3 acres, I'm entitled to be zoned as an RE3. And I believe I would be entitled to be zoned as an RE3 irrespective of the properties that surround me and what any of them think about it. And so, I think this is a, this is an excellent question, and it's come up a couple times in discussion, the zoning ordinance itself, as to whether enforcement is based on the zoning classification, whether, or whether enforcement is based on square footage. And I thought that we have zoning classifications to simplify things and to, and to not have to require people engaging in enforcement to figure out what lot sizes were and such, and that that was already predetermined. And so, I'm hopeful that we can come to a place where we agree that this is by zoning classification and that people who are in the wrong zoning classification are free to appeal to get themselves put in the correct zoning classification without objection. Because it sounds as if, from the explanation from Attorney Forte is that there could be room for objection if someone was trying to merely get themselves put into the classification that our ordinance says that they're entitled to.
No, I, I think that it's, is a reasonable statement that if, if the, the current review of the zoning map did not result in, as Administrator Rooney said, something perfect, because...
Well, it won't be, not yet, for sure.
Right, that, and if there were, there was more room for refinement, that could be addressed in the annual review. What I meant to indicate was that if there were, if there was a zoning classification change for a property that is something different than what be the current, be the current use on the property, then I, I think that would, would certainly require a map amendment.
Understood.
That's different.
Right, right.
Let's let somebody else speak. Actually, Ed was first and then Mike. Go ahead.
Thanks, President Warnicki, I'll be quick. I don't know if this, I mean, the answer you'll give us now may be a different answer with a different board or different people in the future. But it sounds like, I mean, residents are asking, basically, to put it in layman's terms, will you allow lot-by-lot zoning? And the answer is no. It's going to be zoning district mainly. So, if your neighbors are inconsistent with what you have, if you have three acres and they're all R1, you're going to be an R1. And even if you had been using that land on three acres to keep animals and horses and whatever else, you may lose that use. Is that correct?
No, I think you'd be a nonconform, you'd get into that nonconforming historical usage. We're not going to, by any stretch, the staff isn't going to take away if somebody's got a historical use. We've said that at the zoning commission and at the public hearings. That's why we had that long, mini discussions. Jim Brown, how many meetings did we talk about conforming, nonconforming?
Quite a few.
Is that it, Ed?
Trustee Mallett?
Thank you, President Warnicki. You know, I, I think we just move forward with the zoning ordinance as is. However, I would like to note, you know, I, I think we look at this over the next year to determine if some of those uses need to go away from, from district and go back to lot size and see, see how it works. Because right now, it's, we're identifying something that I think some residents might not be happy with.
Mike, go ahead.
When we, when we talked last meeting, we were talking about how drastic a change this is, and I said we should set ourselves a goal of revisiting it in six months. I think we could also add to that, and I'm familiar with this in other municipalities, that if anybody has had a change zoning because of this process, that within the six months, we would give them a hearing where they don't have to pay for it and they don't have to, you know, go through all that rigmarole. So, if we, if we get those folks and they can make a reasonable case to say that, you know, it's always been this way and, and, you know, everybody else should be me. I mean, that might be the case where four lot subdivision, I'm the only one that's estate, but the other three are effectively estate as well. You know, I think we should, we should expect that to be a follow-up in, in the housecleaning and then maybe we can get a chunk of them done in the first six months. And then, you know, and then when the annual review would be a year-ish from now, we could maybe catch up with, with others that, that slipped through the cracks.
No, that, that makes very, that, it's a very good point, and that, I've seen that done before. And, and one thing to consider, it's, you know, when you're talking about uses on a property or a, or map amendment, variation, whatever it might be, due process goes both ways. It's not just for the property owner, it's for the surrounding property owner. So, you know, we would, of course, consult with staff, you know, and I would consult as well just to make sure that any change that would be proposed to make, you know, whether or not it would require a public hearing to match statute, because we don't want to prevent a surrounding property owner from having due process and being able to either say that they're for or against any, any change.
One last comment, and then we'll move on.
I appreciate trustee Mallett's comment about revisiting the issue in six months. I think it's a practical matter that's challenging. Six months from now is immediately after the election in the spring. So, you're potentially, you potentially have new members on the board who barely have their feet wet addressing this issue. So, I think that logistically may be challenging to try and commit to addressing these things in six months. And I'm, and I'm not aware that, that we have a way to fast-track or otherwise ease the process for, you know, existing residents other than to say to them, if you're bringing to our attention something that certainly appears to be in error, we're not going to oppose it, right? But I, I would love to be able to say that we could address this in, in six months or three months or four months, but I'm not sure that's realistic. And I think that we're going to end up looking at an annual map amendment that is going to happen, you know, September, October, or something next year to clean up these, these issues. And it feels as if the, what, realistically, what we can offer people whose properties may be characterized improperly is that we hear you, we understand you, and bring us your information, and it'll be taken care of next fall. But I'm not, I'm not sure that I understand that we can do it before then. But back to trustee Muncy's concern, I'm, I'm not aware that we agreed anywhere in this process to do zoning by district. And if someone in a particular area happens to have a larger property that is entitled to a different designation, I think they're entitled to get that. And, and I understand what trustee, or, excuse me, what Administrator Rooney was saying about different uses, but assuming that all they're saying is, wait a minute, I'm not an R1, I'm an RE3, I think that's where the, where the big breakpoint is here. I don't see why we would object to that.
So, the annual review per state statute is April 1st. We have to do it by April 1st. So, we will be doing a review.
Good.
New date on our zoning ordinance will be April 1st. It's not the fall, it's April 1st.
Good.
Is that fiscal year or...
No, it's the calendar year, April 1st. That's per state statute. Secondly, I think we're just getting all wrapped up over nothing. Quite frankly, there's not a lot of distinctions between our zoning districts. If you take a look at the use table 7.1, there's not a significant difference in permitted and special uses between RE1, RE3, RE2, whatever. Most of our animal provisions go by lot size, with the exception of chickens and roosters. That's where we did make a break between the residential and residential estate. Horses, equines are based on the lot size, and then it follows that the hoofed animals are based on the number of horses. So, that's tied to the, that's tied to the lot size. So, I've already answered a couple questions, and today, people sent me emails, they had these same concerns. And I tried to explain to them, if you, what, I asked them, what is your concern? Because I can probably assuage it, because you can probably still do whatever it is that you want to do, even if you're zoned R1. And, as I half joked with some people today, if I had, if I had four-plus acres and I rezoned R1, and the minimum lot size for R1 is 30,000 square feet, I would be tickled to death. Because I can subdivide, and I can sell that off.
All right.
All right?
Thank you, thank you, Jim Brown.
I don't want to belabor the point, but I'll just say...
Okay, we need to move on. We'll move on to staff reports. We have Deputy Chief Tom Blenko here today with us. Would you want to?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone, Friday from 3 to 6 is the holiday related event here that goes off.
Saturday, Saturday, Tom. I have Saturday, December 7th, right?
7.
7. So, it's, don't come Saturday. Don't come Friday. Yeah.
But we're going to have the tree lighting, so, bring your family, bring your family.
Yeah. 3, 3 to 6 o'clock at the village hall. Good, thank you.
And then what's the 15th? Separate issue with the police department?
No, that's separate.
Separate, right?
Yeah, that's separate.
Yeah.
Okay, we're moving on to a closed session. We had moved down right before adjournment, so we'll go to action items. A, motion to approve ordinance 24-23 regarding the creation of a Planning and Zoning Commission and dissolution of the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Village of Hampton Hills.
So moved, Muncy.
Moved by Muncy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Tom Williams. Roll call?
Discussion?
I'm, I'm sorry, discussion, discussion? All right. Okay, Janet. We pretty much just covered this in our last discussion.
No, don't think we did.
Okay.
I don't think we did at all, actually. Trustee Muncy has made a point of mentioning several times in the past that it is our normal practice to consider items for discussion first and then for action. This item was sprung on us for action. There have been many opportunities to discuss this over the past several months. So, if, in fact, there was a significant conflict between the organization of the Plan Commission, ZBA, and the zoning ordinance, it seems to me that this is something that we should have been considering in parallel as the zoning commission was proceeding. So, how it is that we came to this day where all of a sudden, as of Friday, we became aware that there was a proposal to completely dissolve the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals and replace this body with new people unknown to us, I'm not sure how we can support this. You know, the village currently has 38 volunteers serving on eight different committees. These wonderful people effectively run our village as much as anyone, and we couldn't do it without them. However, to ensure correspondence with the new zoning ordinance, we're being asked to dissolve a seven-member Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals and create a new body. And I feel this move is not transparent, and I can't stand behind it. I value our volunteer committee members very highly. And for me, dissolving this existing body for apparent housekeeping purposes is profoundly disrespectful to our existing volunteers. And I believe it has a negative impact on the enthusiasm of volunteers and others considering whether they want to volunteer in the future. And I'm hoping that we would consider some less drastic solutions to the problems presented. I was told that the Plan Commission and ZBA were once separate and then were subsequently combined. And the village code does not properly reflect this and requires amendment. If so, village code is incorrect, and I support amending it to reflect the combined body. I don't understand how this implies dissolving the current body. I've also been told that there's too much confusion about the existing members' terms to determine what mistakes were made in the past to align their terms properly. But my understanding is that four of the members on the commission were appointed under this administration, and the remaining members' terms will expire next year. And so, I don't, as I understand it, there's not going to be a problem with getting terms aligned in the future. I've also been told that the existing Plan Commission and ZBA is not functional, and it cancels too many meetings and is unable to develop a new comprehensive plan. it cancels too many meetings and is unable to develop a new comprehensive plan. Well, we have a mix of members with different prior experience and different points of view on the plan commission. I think that's healthy. But if the president believes that a member is not a positive force on the commission, then she can send them a letter stating that, stating so, and, and remove them. We don't typically do this for the same reason that we don't debate committee appointments. It's difficult to get good volunteers, and we prize them highly. So we don't want to trash people here in public section. We don't want to create a chilling effect across all potential volunteers by publicly criticizing people who apply or are already serving. I think this is implied by dissolving this commission.
I'm going to pass this on to Carmen, but I just want to say that.
Excuse me, point of order, but I have not finished.
Well, I think it's long enough at this point.
I don't think we have time limits. So I have one remaining point to make, if I may please.
Well, I'll give you two, two more minutes, and that's it.
I don't need that much time. I've also been told that most of the existing members will, will be renominated. I don't know if that's true or not, I've been told that. If so, that's a small comfort. However, each of those seven members will need four votes from this board in order to be confirmed. Who knows how that's going to work out? Instead, I think this is a good opportunity to reassess the direction of the body, and finally appoint a vice chair as required, which has never happened until this time. So I don't see any problems here that can't be fixed without this drastic action of completely dissolving our existing plan commission and zoning board of appeals, and appointing new people.
I just want to say a few words, Ed, before. Mike? Mike, you want to?
I do.
Ah, okay. I just want to add that anyone interested, I mean, there's a reason we're doing this. We're trying to, we're trying to correct many things that needed correction, and this is why we're moving forward. And anybody who's interested in volunteering, whether it's from the existing board today, you know, before we take this vote, if it passes, or somebody new wants to serve as a volunteer on the board, you just have to email me. I have spent probably truly 25 years in this community volunteering, between Canton Township Open Space, political organizations, you know, volunteering for Christmas at Coron Farm, or any, any events at the Gray Willows. I mean, I am so pro-volunteer, I just take that really as an insult. And on that note, Ed, you go ahead, and then we'll go to Mike.
Thank you, President Winicky. Well, first of all, I would say that, you know, I, I share in Trustee Burson's comment about this being presented to us at, at the point where it, you know, it coincides, it makes sense to, to vote on it now, coincides with, with the zoning text in the zoning map, everything kind of works together. But typically, again, we would like a little more time to consider this, rather than have it all of a sudden come at us. However, given that we had the weekend to look over it, and I thank Attorney Forte for the letter he put together explaining, you know, the reasons for this, I have not been privy to the questions and answers that Trustee Burson referred to. I have not heard any of those reasons why, or, or reassurances, or, or, or any of the criticisms, honestly. I mean, we, we disbanded commissions and committees that we have, this village has, disbanded commissions and committees in the past, not as a criticism of their members, but because, due to function and operations. You know, business development was no longer something that that particular board wanted to have, or felt that it was necessary. It wasn't a criticism of, of the people, that, I'm sure they were thanked, and they were doing a great job. It just wasn't something that was necessary anymore at that point in time. This remains necessary, but the way that it's set up, as Attorney Forte puts out, this is, this is the best way, better way to do it, the right way to do it. And similar to us spending almost a year now, creating a zoning commission, throwing out the old zoning, redoing all, you know, doing what we did, again, the effort was necessary to get things right. I think this appears to be the same kind of effort. We need to do this to get things right. And it's the president's prerogative to, to appoint, reappoint, or not appoint, or, you know, whatever. And the president, and the, you know, village staff and attorney are, are behind this, have explained it, and I, I think it just makes operational sense that this, that we should vote yes on this.
Okay. Mike, go ahead.
I was trying to find your email, Attorney Forte. The, I, I agree, the, what you said, what you started with, Trustee Burson, same thing I've said repeatedly. Thank you. What I repeatedly said was, "I don't like things being dumped on the dais at the last minute." I've said that to previous village presidents, some in the room, and previous village presidents who aren't in the room. So if we're going to have a process for looking through stuff, we should have the process for looking through stuff. Yeah, this, this is, this is where I was going to go. The, the, I think where I disagree is, it was inherent that the current body was going to be dissolved in the text of the zoning ordinance that we're talking about adopting. We talked about that at the zoning commission meetings, because it talks about a new body. And it talks about pulling those powers back and clarifying to two bodies. That was what we're going through the whole process, talking about. So inherently, that means the current body is gone, it has to be reappointed. So I don't think that's the difference. The, and it'd be wrong for me to say if it doesn't make sense, because the place I work has exactly a planning and zoning commission, for reasons of, of time, of people's, you know, better use of their time, they're essentially doing similar things, I get all that. So I, I, I read, and I didn't see it written that way, but that was our understanding at, at zoning commission, that we're starting fresh, but with people reapplying. That, that was my understanding as well. So I'd just be interested to hear more about if we don't think we have enough work for a zoning commission coming forward, that's why we want to reconstitute this, and then, then I'll think about it more.
Carmen, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. So as my memo lays out, the, there were certain issues that were identified to me by, by staff regarding the current makeup of, one issue was the term lengths. I think when it came up for the last one or two appointments, it was very unclear as to how long the appointment would be for, or whose term that, that individual was going to be serving out. I know both myself looked at it, looked at it with Clerk Johnson, really couldn't figure out whose term was actually up, because there were a number of resignations, people had moved out of the community, some had passed away. So I, I was tasked with the, the plan to try to figure out how to make the terms match what was required in the statute, and, and also in the village code. So as you, as you all know, the village code has a separate plan commission and a, and a ZBA. They're not combined officially into one body, but they, but the code says that the members of one serves as members of the other. So effectively, that does combine them, by members only, but not the actual bodies into one body. This change would, would make it one body, and a lot of communities do it this way. Some take a singular body and separate it into two bodies. You can go both ways. The only way to refresh term lengths, as required by statute, which when you, when you seat a new board of appeals, you have to have a, a member with a one-year term, a two-year term, three, four, five, all the way through seven. After those terms expire, everyone gets a five-year term, whether they're a reappointment or whether they're a new appointee. So the only, but the only way to do that, and to essentially terminate the terms of those who are sitting, is to completely dissolve the commission, and to create something that's different than the current commission. You really can't just dissolve the commission, reestablish the same exact commission, because as an appointee, you ha, you have a right to the remainder of your term, unless you're actually removed from office for some sort of malfeasance or unwillingness to serve. So the village president doesn't have the ability to just say, you know, "I don't, I don't like the person that's on the commission, I'd rather appoint somebody else." If they still want to finish out their term, and they have not violated any sort of state statute or the village code, they have the right to the, the remainder of that term. Because that person could have been appointed either by the village president or a prior village president. Otherwise, the new village president could come in and cancel everyone's terms and put other people in. So that's why state statute has that provision preventing against that. The, the reason why we went with seven, I'm sorry, five-year terms, was because, and used the one-through-seven-year staggering term, is because that, those requirements are included in the Illinois municipal code for what's called a board of appeals. So some communities call it a planning and zoning commission, some call it a ZBA, some call it a board of appeals, it doesn't really matter what it's called. And the, the responsibilities or the duties that you currently have for the ZBA and for the plan commission are now going to be combined, or would be combined, under the one body. So there, I don't believe there were any changes to what's currently in the village code. The village code provisions actually were, were very close to what state statute allows for, or requires of the duties of both of those two individual commissions. If anyone else has any other questions?
Anybody have questions for Carmen? No?
Oh, and the, one last thing. The 2023 zoning ordinance did have what I think appeared to be a combined planning and zoning commission. Or at least, there, it may have been a typo, there may have been some intent to transition to that sort of model, but it, it was not changed in the village code.
Okay. Let's have Jim.
Yeah, just, just a real quick comment, because there's been a lot of discussion. Have we had time to kind of kick the tires on this piece? And, you know, I agree with Trustee Muncy saying that we had the weekend, but even prior to that, this had come up, both in side conversations, a little bit during the zoning meetings, as, as Trustee Mallett brought up. And so it's not like this is a new thing. And so I'm very comfortable in having the vote tonight, and don't feel we're, as, as everybody knows, I've raised this issue in the past, if it's not been discussed first, but I think we've fully vetted this. Thanks.
One thing I did forget to mention was, if, if the zoning ordinance is approved tonight, with the language that includes a ZBA and a plan commission, to make this change, you'd have to have a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would require a public hearing. So this, if you are going to make this change, it would be tonight, it actually would be before the zoning ordinance is approved, which is why it's first in, in line on the, on the agenda.
Tom, go ahead.
Um, you know, when I started to be on the board and hear about the zoning thing, that's one of the first things I really understood, that these boards would be dissolved after. So it's not new to me, it didn't come as a shocker to me at all. So that would be my take on it. I understood it, it didn't really, it wasn't something I read and went, "Wow," you know? So I wasn't offended by it at all. So I just wanted to state that out there, that I am ready to vote on it.
Okay, Janet?
My understanding was that the administration was considering separating the plan commission and the zoning board of appeals, because the function of the two bodies are completely different. Plan commission is given a range of powers under statute, and the zoning board of appeals is given a range of responsibilities. The definition of the two is different, the, the general nature of the way they work is different. And so separating the two bodies into two groups of people that were focused on the two different functions, which is what was represented to me, as we went through the zoning commission process, made sense. I do have a question, I guess to Attorney Forte, but perhaps, I'm not sure whether you know or not, as to whether any prior committees, boards, commissions in the village have been dissolved and replaced. I know that we at once, at one time, had an economic development committee that was dissolved under the prior administration, but I'm not sure that we've ever had a situation where an existing serving board was dissolved and replaced.
I'm not aware, one way or the other, with regard to, to Campton Hills, I, I know from personal experience, I've, I've, that has happened in other communities. I've also served on a board in a community I used to live in that was dissolved and then replaced, and actually, I believe was separated into two separate committees. But, so that's my experience with it outside of work.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All right, roll call.
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. All right, moving on to 7B, motion to approve ordinance 24-22, adopting a new zoning ordinance and zoning map.
I would so move.
I'd like to be recognized.
Okay. Jim, you a second?
Sorry, Mike. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2422, adopting a new zoning ordinance and zoning map, but with the addition of three amendments. The first amendment kind of goes into, I'll, I'll say, legal detail, as it relates to the commission that we were just talking about. So I would ask Attorney Carmen, if you could, kind of take us through what, what that amendment would read. I have it in front of me, but, you know, I think it'd be helpful if you'd do it.
Thank you. So as I stated before, because the, the board was considering the prior ordinance regarding the combination of the ZBA and the plan commission into the, let's call it the PZC now, the copy of the zoning ordinance that, a draft zoning ordinance that was included in the packet still had those references. So Trustee McElvy's motion would include certain statements that make those corrections to the, to the draft zoning ordinance before they're approved. So the motion, if he agrees, would be to approve the zoning ordinance with the following revisions, to revise the title of Section 2.3 from Plan Commission to Planning and Zoning Commission, to combine the duties of the zoning board of appeals listed in Section 2.4 with the duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission in Section 2.3, and to renumber those paragraphs accordingly, to delete all references to the zoning board of appeals in Article 2, to add a new paragraph H in Section 2.3 to read other powers and duties as specified in Title 2, Chapter 1 of the village go, code of the village of Campton Hills, and throughout the entire zoning ordinance, to revise all references to Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals to read Planning and Zoning Commission. So both myself and, and zoning Officer Brown reviewed the draft zoning ordinance to make sure that all these corrections would be made, so that we'd have unanimity throughout. And these powers are also reflected in the, would be reflected in the village code and the ordinance you just approved.
All right, well, thank, thank you for that. And the second amendment would be from Paragraph D of Section 8.6, the home-based businesses, to delete Item Number 6, massage therapist. And the next one, and final, would be in Article 7, Table 7.1, under the land use of tobacconists, change the table to indicate that this land use is not permitted in any zoning. So those are the three amendments, and everything else stays as is. That's the motion.
Okay. Ed, go ahead.
I think you need a second before you discuss.
Oh, I thought Mike, didn't you second?
I would make you a second one.
Oh.
I'll second.
All right, Tom will second. Okay, go ahead, Ed.
Thank you, President Winicky. Well, the first one's a mouthful, the second one we can get to, the third one I agree with is, last meeting, we had a discussion about what a tobacconist was, and I don't think we ever got a real definition of what constitutes a tobacconist, how that's different than what we say in our communities is vaping, or whatever you want to call that. I just think it's too unclear what this business is, it's not defined for us, and therefore, I would be okay with, yes, that, that third part of the amendment, removing tobacconists as, as a permitted or special use. We don't even, can't even define what it is, we, we shouldn't be allowing it.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, and then, I want to kind of just address the second one rather briefly. That was the massage therapist. The issue there, to me, is, is an ethical issue. It was brought to the attention of the board and to the public at the last meeting, and documents were passed out where a trustee is actually having the business, which is in currently violation of our current code, and asking that we add that back in, that it was actually two meetings ago. And I don't see how we, as a board, can support that. It, it, you know, in, in my Wisconsin language, I would sell, say it smells a little bit, and so I think, think we, we need to remove that and do the right thing. So that's the reason I feel that should be in there.
Go ahead, Janet, go ahead.
So, obviously, you're talking about me, Trustee McElvy. I'm the only licensed massage therapist on the board. I've made it a point not to operate a massage therapy business from my home during the time that I've been serving on the board. Any allegation that I have done otherwise is false and unprovable. So I'm not sure how your concern about a board member supposedly illegally operating a business of this nature is relevant, because it simply hasn't occurred. it simply hasn't occurred. That notwithstanding, the, this is not new to this board or to this community. There's been an ongoing prejudice against people involved in massage therapy for decades in the United States. It's actually fairly unique to the United States. Around the world, massage therapists are not discriminated against in this way. There seems to be a notion that there's something unsavory about it. I'm not sure where that comes from. That's not the nature of the work that I've ever done. And in fact, the work that I do, if you were ever to have encountered me professionally, isn't really, although I'm licensed as a massage therapist, is not technically in that, in that realm at all. I've never given a traditional massage in my life. The work that I do for people is more in the, related to pain relief and chronic conditions that they may be experiencing. They're relieved by bodywork techniques. Nonetheless, I think that it was established last time, without regard to what I do or don't do in my home, that there are a variety of people who do practice massage therapy in their home in our community, and they do it reputedly. And there are people, I believe, on our board, that go to massage therapists who work out of their homes. So I think that your criticism of this is misguided, and perhaps a bit personal, and should be withdrawn from the discussion.
Oh, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, thanks. Just a couple of more points. First of all, your latter statement, I think you're referring to Trustee Williams, who did say that when there was a consensus discussion around that topic, that he goes into another village and has that done. Let's take a little history lesson. If you go back to the, to the prior board and the prior zoning commission that came up with that zoning ordinance, passed it on to the board, that board passed it. In both those cases, this was discussed, both at the zoning level, and part of the Planning Commission level, and also at the board, and for lots of different reasons. Some issues in St. Charles, et cetera, that, that was voted down. So now let's fast forward to the present time. In the present time, the zoning commission that just passed this on to us, they also had the discussion. And they said they did not want to put that in there, but that discussion did take place.
So what is it that you're afraid of?
If I may finish, okay? I believe I do have the microphone. So when it came to this board, there was a consensus, okay? I wasn't part of that, but there was a consensus to move it forward. I'm not afraid of anything personally, but what bothers me is how things look ethically. Now, you said I was doing something personally against you. First of all, I didn't mention your name. Obviously, you now said, yeah, that, that was me. But you are the one that we're proposing to change the ordinance, and you're the one who has advertisements. Whether you're doing it now or not, I have no idea. I don't.
I mean, you have a website.
Okay, yeah. You have a website. You're advertising it. No, by the way, your address isn't Burlington. Your address should be Camps Hill. But on your ads, you say you live in Burlington.
Uh, no, I don't.
Jim's got the floor.
If I can finish, okay? So all I'm saying, Trustee Burson, I'm not making this personal at all, but for a person to try to add this as an addition to the zoning ordinance is self-serving, in the case that you do have the license, and you do have ads up. That smells, okay? And it's as simple as that. So that's why I want this to pass and be part of this.
It's simply not the intention.
Tom, go ahead.
You know, we were swallowing, I feel like, it was like we had a fire always going on our throats for the last three weeks with zoning. So, you know, a lot of things happen during these meetings that, you know, sometimes you sit back and you think about it, and you reflect. And first thing, number one, I would say that, that, like, my view of the tobacconist after, I kind of thought about it more. You know, I traveled into the Carroll Stream area, Glendale Heights, for Thanksgiving, and I just thought, wow, there's a lot of, it's like, cheap cigs. I mean, it's like everywhere. And I just felt, you know, after thinking about it more, I just don't feel like that, you know, with the limited retail space that we have available, I just don't feel like I personally would like to see that. I don't think it is a good way of culture for the, for the, for the town that we're in. Not that I'm against anybody smoking or anything, but I just don't think it's a good, a good look with the limited space we have. Now, in relation to the massage thing, I am one that does get massages. I do, on someone's house, and I've expressed opinions with Janet that, you know, I don't think it's a big deal with people. I really don't. I think it's kind of matured into a business that is, depending on age, can have something to do with people not liking it, but, 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 and here's where this is more of a reflection issue of it. After the meeting and what was presented to us, not saying that that was 1,000% of what was happening, Trustee Burson, I, I just feel like, I think it's important as a board that, you know, none of my votes do I want to have, I don't want, I'm reflecting like I'm helping a trustee do something that I feel, you know, and I'm not saying this is the case, but I don't want it to have it where my vote is like, a vote of like, hey, wink, wink, nudge, nudge. Not saying that. I just, in this instance, I would almost kind of say, hey, I'd like to pull it out of there for now. Maybe it can be revisited in the future. But it's just one of those things that I feel like, in light of what was, and it was kind of a shock to me, I'll be honest with you, to that level of how it was presented and the address, that I just kind of thought, geez, you know, I'm going to probably stay back and vote no on it now. And that's, it's really not that I don't believe in it. It's just that I think that the situation was unfortunate. So I don't want to put myself in that position with my vote, so.
Uh, go ahead, Janet.
I think it's unfortunate that colleagues that I may have in this valued profession might be damaged by this dialogue. Again, I am not currently in the business of, of providing massage therapy in my home, and my recommendation that we add this back into the code had nothing to do with any economic interest that I might have. It had to do purely with the fact that I understand what the business is. And I understand that it is a business, it is a profession, and it is a caring profession in which we help people. And it is astonishing to me-
Point of order, point of order. If you could just address the board, please. You're constantly looking out there. I'd like-
You know, I can look where I choose to, Jim.
Okay.
So, so I can look where I choose. And we have a public out there. It's not just you. And so I'm engaged in a caring profession, as other people are, and it disappoints me greatly to think that our village would say, no, I'm sorry, you can't engage in your, in your, you know, your, your, your medical profession, which is licensed by the state of Illinois, in your home, because some people think that Janet might be making a nickel on it.
Mike, go ahead.
I think I'd like to, if we could, break these into, I don't, I'm not comfortable with being in the same motion, because I may have to vote down, and I don't want to do that. I believe the first amendment that Trustee McElvy offered is integral. We just voted on that as a board. That's the will of the board, so I'm okay with that, even though I was on the dissenting side of it. But these other two topics, I think, they're amendments to what we're about to pass. They could be amendments, they could be amended thereafter also. So I'm not comfortable taking the motion as a whole. I would be comfortable taking the motion for the, the zoning board with the text amendments necessary to reflect the, what we just passed at this point, and then I'd be happy to have a separate of the other two.
Uh, go ahead, Ed.
I think Trustee Botner was before me, but I would like to be recognized after that, please.
Okay. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you. We all bring our own personal backgrounds to this board, and I think that that's what, you know, really aids in our productivity. And massage therapy may not have been something that I would have even considered or thought of as a at-home business. I also, I really feel like this is more of a personal attack on Trustee Burson than it is on massage therapists working from home. And I think we're getting really subjective here, and we're trying to associate massage therapy at home with some sort of a seedy environment. If any of these different businesses start doing things that are against the law, they'll be investigated and prosecuted, and that's what the police department's for. But I think generally speaking, I've had lots of massages throughout my life, and it's always been very professional by, you know, nice people and professional establishments. I, I'm vaguely aware that the seedy massage parlors even exist, and yet we are shooting down massage therapy because of, you know, this, this attack on Trustee Burson. And I can't support that. I think that if folks would like to practice massage therapy at home, it, it fits perfectly within sort of the, the bounds that we've, it fits right into the table. And that's all I have.
Okay. I'm sorry. Ed, go ahead.
Thank you, President Wenckie. Two things. First of all, to Trustee Millet's comment, I don't know that we can make amendments to the zoning ordinance later. That's a revision of the zoning ordinance. We would then need to have a public hearing and follow the state statute, and that's not an easy thing to do. So either voting on all three together tonight, or somehow splitting those up to vote on tonight, right, I could see, that needs to be done before it gets passed, in my understanding. And it might just be easier to vote on all three, see how that goes, and then, then somebody can make another motion if, if that doesn't pass, or however that works. The second thing, though, I would say, though, is, is that I, I hear a lot of passion for massage therapy from a number of people here, and I, I think that was somewhat agreed upon when we all voted, or consensus, by consensus, said, yeah, let's allow massage therapy in, in home business, in residential districts. We all agreed to that. However, a resident came and presented information to us, which, which appears, and it still does appear on a website right now, that there is and was a, a location within our village that was conducting massage therapy. The address is a home address in our village, and it's, it's advertised as a, you know, pain relief type of whatever, you know, massage therapy, but it's a, it would fall under what our ordinance would call massage. And the specter of having something presented, you know, by someone that may have been conducting something in the past, it, we just don't, we don't, we don't want to be Dalton, Illinois here. You know, we, we don't want the specter of, of, geez, their, you know, their commissioners are kind of, you know, or their, their board members are advocating for things for themselves. And that's something we want to avoid. So with Mr., or Trustee Williams' recommendation, that maybe this isn't forever, but maybe this should be for now, because it doesn't look good to have somebody on the board conducting, potentially, allegedly, conducting an activity that would not have been permitted, advocating specifically to permit that activity. Again, I just think that doesn't look great, and I, I would agree, that, that's, that's something that we should consider.
Okay. Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, just a quick comment, because I want to respond to, you know, Trustee Botner, because it's not personal at all. It's like a, it's like a judge being, having a business and ruling on that business. It's, it smells. That judge would recuse himself. That's the right thing to do. The person that proposed it is in the business, or was in the business. Should have recused herself. She should not have been the one presenting that. Now the whole public knows this. I can't be part of voting for that. And I think it was best said by Trustee Williams. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Uh, Mike, go ahead. You've been waiting.
Thank you. Um, there's, there's a differentiation between the, and it alludes to, I think, somewhat what Trustee Williams just said. There's a, there's a, the information about the human trafficking is very serious, very real, and, and correct, very correct. North Avenue, DePage County, multiple busts. That's not this. This is someone doing a home business. That's a physical therapy-type home business. There's a distinction there. To the point, whether it benefits a person, I mean, at some point, anything we vote on is in this, this, from these seats, could potentially benefit us or, or hurt us. So I'd like to have that as a separate discussion. I want, again, I want to vote for the zoning ordinance. If what we just did with the previous motion was we made amendments to the draft ordinance, then I would ask to withdraw the motion on the floor, and then start with two separate amendments. One is amending to remove massage therapy as an allowable home use. And then the second would be to remove tobacconist as an allowable in whichever district we have it is. So when those two motions are done with, then we would know what the amended zoning ordinance that we're talking about, that we would then vote on.
So I agree that you could have separate discussions on them, but because the singular action item tonight is to approve the zoning ordinance, the first, the first vote makes the zoning ordinance effective. So any further change would be subject to a text amendment. So if you would like to discuss or determine how the votes would fall on each individual issue, you could take a consensus, a show of hands on each individual issue after discussing them, and then determine whether or not the, the combined motion would be, as was stated, would be effective, or that you'd amend your motion.
Okay.
To have first and second.
It would have, yeah, it'd have to be one motion.
To, to that point, counsel, anything that we propose as an ordinance can be amended at this dais before it's adopted, in that, we do that all the time. So if we are just talking about adopting the zoning ordinance with the revisions here for, under Article 2 zoning administration, will require a hearing later, then what we're talking about now would also require a hearing later.
No, I mean, once you take a vote on approving the zoning ordinance, whether as currently included in the packet, or with one, or two, or three of the proposed changes that Trustee McElvy said today, that then becomes effective as of the date that's stated on the ordinance. I think we said the end of the year. So if you then come back at the same meeting and discuss making a revision to that, you wouldn't be following the, the state statute for amending the zoning ordinance.
So what?
Because it's already been approved.
So what Mike needs to do is get the first or second, amend their, their-
Right. You can, you can either amend the motion that's currently on the floor, or you can just continue discussion and say, okay, is there a consensus on issue number one, which I, sounds like there is, because that's, it's required, because you passed the first ordinance. And it's really issue number two and issue number three. If, you know, there's no consensus on issue number two, the motion can be amended if the person who made the motion so chooses. Same for number three.
Mike, do you want to amend the motion, or?
I can.
You do?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to hold the motion, because I think Mr. Muncy said it, said it better than I, I could, so I'm going to hold the motion.
Okay.
I mean, I'm welcoming more discussion. I would like-
He'd have to amend.
He would.
Oh, he would. Okay. All right. Janet?
I guess I would just make the additional comment that I felt after the zoning commission had met for a year, and we had multiple meetings on the zoning ordinance, it appeared that we had come to consensus at the last meeting. So, little surprise that Trustee McElvy comes into this meeting with amendments on the substance of the zoning ordinance itself. Trustee Millet is correct that we do do this fairly routinely in other ordinances. But an ordinance of this magnitude that has been discussed to death, to come in at the last minute with these two rather targeted amendments, to use his language, feels a little fishy to me.
All right. Any more discussion?
Where is the language that we're just talking about, please? Eight, eight-point, what, Trustee McElvy?
Yeah, McElvy.
Sorry.
Uh, the paragraph B, Section 8.6.
8.6, paragraph B, right? Limitations on home businesses?
Right. Delete item number six, massage.
D is in David.
I think he's in the wrong section. I think he's going to use D.
D. David? It doesn't say that right now. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, sorry.
Mr. Brown, did I give you the wrong, it should be Section 8.6, which is all basically-
Yeah, that's what I said.
Right. And then you have-
Delete number six?
Yeah, it should be D.
Yeah, it should be D.
Uh huh.
I'm sorry, I have a whole copy, I have the correct copy.
Well, that's my problem. The, the, the agenda has six as offices of architects, brokers, engineers, yada, yada. It doesn't say that separately on what we published.
The motion that just deleted the massage.
It's not, what I'm saying, it's not in there right now. The, the, what, what's attached to the agenda that we're voting on, it's not in there, it's not in there now.
Oh, you're talking, you're talking about.
Put, put your mic on.
Yeah.
Put your mic on, Jim. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You're talking about the whole document.
Yeah.
No, I got this separate from that.
Hmm. So I don't think that got added to what we're looking at for right now.
I think it was added at our last meeting.
I know it was, but it's not, it's not what's published.
Mike's saying it's not in the document.
Okay. Let's see what Jim comes up with over there.
And then I would assume if it's not, if it's not in the document and we pass it, massage therapist is not in the document. Okay.
And yet there was a consensus.
Yeah, but it's not anywhere published.
Well, it's a rather different problem, isn't it?
However, we put tobacconist in the document at our last meeting.
Well.
We did that.
Which is also not shown, but, but that was in the use matrix, which is a different section.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah, so a question then, if what I did was pulled it not from the big document, right, so. If it. Yeah, Article seven, table seven one is tobacconist.
Is it in there?
No.
As a permitted, okay. We should remove that.
So what we published does have tobacconist in it right now, but it doesn't have massage therapist as permitted right now. If I'm looking at what was, what was included in the packet that was published and that we received.
But it was the consensus in the prior meeting?
Not the previous.
Not the prior meeting, two meetings prior, right?
I believe it was the last meeting, but either.
So would you amend your motion to remove tobacconist?
I have a question before we start amending motions.
Okay.
Self-storage facility also was not added on page thirty-eight on, in the zoning as, yeah, as, as it should have been.
Can I, I have to apologize. Sorry, I've had about eight versions of this ordinance, and I think I attached the wrong one.
Oh.
That's what I think happened. My apologies. I think I attached the wrong PDF. I had them both dated, cover date of December third. I can go back to my computer and check, but I think that's the issue. There is a complete PDF of the new ordinance. I went through, in your staff report, you have excerpts of the sections that were changed in the last meeting. Those were incorporated into a new PDF, but I think in my haste on Wednesday, doing this, I attached another PDF that had the cover of December third.
It, I don't believe it's a fatal flaw to take an action tonight, because you, you're adding or deleting those uses you've discussed on a Thursday and a Tuesday. So you can come to a consensus on what you're going to delete or add still, as Jim was doing with his original motion and second. You just got to decide what the final take should be added or not added.
Well, hold on, Ed, go ahead.
Would it reflect the current correct zoning ordinance if we were to say that we were, what we are passing is the zoning ordinance, which reflects the comments as detailed in our meeting minutes and also in the agenda packet here, those red line comments? Because that, that would reflect everything that, that should be changed.
Does that work, then?
Well.
No.
Carmen has to.
I just have one question for Mr. Brown. Is that the, the final copy, is that what's been posted on the village's website under the zoning?
I'd have to go check.
Yeah.
I'd have to go check. Because that was sent, that PDF was sent separately to the, the staff, so that might have been done with the correct version, you know? I'd have to go check. They both have a cover.
Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead.
I have two concerns. You know, one is whether or not we're, we're meeting the expectations of communicating correctly to the public. And the other one is, I know that, you know, BZO Brown has worked very, very hard on, on the text, the map, all of this. It's, and there's an enormous document, and we've had many, many versions of it. And I just, I, I'm, I'm concerned about whether or not we can actually be confident, given a couple of different discrepancies that have come up right now, as to whether what we're passing tonight is what we agreed to pass in the last two meetings. And I would really like to see the full text of what we're passing in front of us, rather than agreeing that it's sort of a piece of this and red lines of that. I really wanted to pass this tonight, but it, it feels as if we may not be fully prepared.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think, we're okay. I mean, it's, it's not, we're, we're at the point where we can consider, the, the gist is still, the gist is still the same. We know the, the few things that we thought were in there, one got in there, so some change was made from what was talked about before, but not. So if we, we can certainly, like anything else, if we're passing it as amended, we could pass it as amended. And if we say the amendments at this point, at this point, if we say the amendments are to remove tobacconist from the use table and to add self-storage to the use table, everybody would understand what we're voting on, I'm fine with that. But as massage, home-based massage is not in there right now, then we would have to make that as an option to add it now.
No different than self-storage.
Correct.
Right. May I, may I continue, President Wenckie?
Well.
Yeah, I think we've both.
I think, go.
Okay, thanks. I don't know if we need to list what we want to add, because it's, it's all in the packet. It's all in the agenda that was sent. All, all the changes that, that Mr. Brown made, or made to the one correct draft, are page by page in there. So I called them red lines, but they're, they're, all those changes have been made. They just didn't get, the correct document with those changes didn't get posted. So I don't know if we need to go back and talk about the fact that there was some reference to the dark sky ordinance, some reference to adding self-storage. There's a number of them. Thank you.
So what was posted online was, was, sorry to interrupt, was incorrect as well. So the correct version would be what was presented at the last meeting, plus the red line, six or seven sections that were included in the staff memorandum, there's about a half dozen or more sections corrected, they were redlined. So that would, the, the aggregate of all that would be the correct ordinance.
So I believe you're at the point where we're going to have to have an amendment to your motion and, and what Mr. Mallett said, to, to make the corrections that we want to.
Well, there's two that we know of, right?
Yep, self-storage and the tobacconist. And, and because, and motion, there'd have to be a separate motion to add the massage therapy, because that wasn't published.
Why is that, since it was consensus at the last meeting and should have been in this draft?
It's hard to say, yeah.
I can't answer that.
Yeah.
Let Carmen kind of detail it.
I, so what I'm hearing is that the, the consensus that was come to at the last meeting was included in the version, red line version that was distributed to the board. So it, as trustee Mallett stated, we, we had already anticipated passing the ordinance or approving the zoning ordinance with the changes regarding the PCC. So you can certainly make those amendments today, even though that language itself was not distributed to the public or included in the packet. You know, the, the general gist of the action item as included on the agenda is that you're approving the zoning ordinance. You know, we're not baiting and switching and approving something completely different. So what I would suggest is that if there were revisions that were made in red line, that they're generally discussed tonight, either by trustee, or by, by Mr. Brown or by somebody else, and identified so the public knows what they are, they do match what the consensus was at the last meeting, and then the, the, the motion tonight would be to approve the zoning ordinance as, as a consensus was from the last meeting, as has been discussed tonight. And then with any other revisions that we discussed tonight, so like the changes to the PCC and anything else.
Okay.
I think you'd have to amend your motion.
Yes, yes.
But you want to remove massage therapy as a consensus item. That's kind of what, everything else, I think we, and you want to remove tobacconist.
Tobacconist.
So you'd still be needing to ma- make a revision to your motion, and then it's a question whether you want to do it the Mallett way of breaking them apart.
I would suggest that, you know, right now you have a motion on the floor and a second, but, you know, we've identified, you know, some differences from what was in the, the packet, from what was distributed to the public. So if you withdraw the motion, you can make the motion to indicate what you've already stated, the, the changes that you'd like to have made, or, or just amend your motion to, to state what you've, you've already said, but with the additional changes from what was publicly published, and then we can read that from, from, you know, what was sent to you guys.
Okay, so.
Just generally, the red lines.
Do you want to amend, or do you want to withdraw? It's one or the, yeah.
They really could do it either way.
Yeah, I think I'd rather amend. But help me with the amendment. Okay, so I, I made the motion including massage, which is not in the document, but was in the red line. I was kind of, you know, tracking along the way, because that's where I got all the information from. But anyways, I didn't go into the document, I went for the red line. So the fact that it was not in the document, we want to do what? We want to now add it?
Sure, so I think the motion would, would be that you're, you move to approve the zoning ordinance as proposed, but with the revisions that were included in zoning officer Brown's report to the board.
Okay.
And then after your motion's done, he can generally read what those are.
Okay.
And as reflected by the board's last, you know, discussion.
Okay.
And then with the other statements that you made tonight. So none of that would change, because in.
Well, the, the other statements that I made were part of the motion. I mean, we're in the motion. When you say statements, I don't know what you mean.
The, the other parts of your motion would remain the same, is what I mean.
Okay. All right, so if you, I think you just stated it, so Mr. Brown, if you could add those additions, or give the board those additions that were left out, to add to my motion.
Okay, could you just state it clearly, so we, so everybody knows what they're voting on?
I can state it for her.
Please.
Perfect, thank you.
And you can tell me if you, if this is what you had, had meant to make.
Is massage in or out? Is tobacconist in or out?
Right. So the motion would be to adopt the zoning ordinance as presented, with the revisions that were, came to a consensus at the last board meeting, and reflecting in zoning officer board Brown's report, which he'll refer to in a moment, with the revisions to the language regarding the ordinance regarding the planning, creation of the Planning and Zoning Commission that I stated earlier. I'm not going to repeat those again, they're on, they're in the record. And then with the, the.
Two other amendments regarding the massage, right? And also the tobacconist.
But clarify that, it's, so they're staying in, or they're going out?
They're going out.
They're going out.
Right, they're going out. In other words, my motion stays the same, but we, we're adding the thing that Ed, that trustee Muncy said wasn't in there, so we're adding it back, because massage wasn't in there.
Okay, that's your motion? Do I, do we have a second? Seconded by?
Second.
I think Mike seconded.
No, no.
No? Okay. All right, Tom seconds?
And then just so it's clear, I think we should have just a general description of what was included in the red lines.
If I could, and I don't want to read through it, I just want to refer to Mr. Brown's staff memorandum of November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, and the subject is revisions to zoning ordinance draft per village board discussions on nineteen November. I think that's the red line, that, that, those are the attachments, the, the description and thirteen attachments that Mr. Brown made.
And then to be clear, if the ordinance is approved tonight, the exhibit that will be attached to the final copy that's published will be the final full copy incorporated in the red lines, and any changes you make tonight.
May, may I ask a question to clarify?
One last question, and then we'll.
So when, so if we were to vote yes on this amendment, we are voting both for the technical change for the, for the planning commission, planning and zoning commission, and also, if we were to vote yes, you're also voting for the restriction against massage therapy and against tobacconists, because these have been bundled together in this motion.
And then the only, only other change is what Mr. Brown talked about earlier.
And, and the. Self-storage.
Well, no.
That was already.
And, and all of the, the revisions that are reflected in the staff memorandum from Mr. Brown on twenty-seventh of November, which is.
So we're incorporating all of those except for massage therapy and tobacconist?
Check.
Yes.
Okay.
And keep in mind what Mr. Brown also talked about earlier.
So all in one package.
Was the, the one parcel change from.
The zoning map.
The one zoning map change, but that's included in the report.
All right, are we ready to vote? No, Mike? Well, let, let's have Mike speak, he wanted.
Let Brown first.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you ready?
Mr. Brown?
Now I lost what I was going to read. I, just for clarification, I'd like to go through very, very briefly the attachment. So attachment was, was revisions to section three point two, the public notice that is changing the responsibility for the installation of the sign from staff to the applicant. Revisions to section six one, a reference to the dark skies portion of the municipal code. Revisions to table seven dash one, that was allowing self-storage facilities as a special use in all of the commercial districts, including RD. Table eight dash one, barns, that essentially there were two amendments to table eight dash one and section eight dash four concerning barns, treating barns and pole barns the same. Section eight dash three, we removed party walls, we just changed it to walls as a, as a condition for ADUs, attached ADUs. Section eight dash five, we allow electric fences for animal husbandry. Section eight dash two, we changed the formula for accessory structures, it was liberalized a little bit, I won't go into the details on that, but it's in the packet. And then there were several revisions to Article nine on animals, roosters allowed in estate, residential estate, nowhere else, maximum up to three. Horses allowed essentially per acre from R one all the way up to the residential estate zoning. Hoofed barnyard animals, four times the number of horses allowed, unlimited number of other barnyard animals, that's kind of a gist of, of the changes. We are allowing gravel driveways, that was a change in section eleven dash six, any place in the village. And section eleven dash nine had changes, the vehicle and license plate provisions on the maximum number of, of commercial or large vehicles that be, could be parked overnight in the residential area outside.
Go ahead, Mike.
And tobacconist was added, and massage therapy at home.
No.
Business was in that consensus.
No.
Yeah, that's what's in the red line that you.
No.
No, that was, I think that was in.
Don't you know?
November nineteen.
What he's saying is it was supposed to be in the other.
I get it, but it's not.
Yeah.
So we're not voting on it right now, that's my point, we don't have to, we don't have to have this argument.
Well, the motion is just clarifying that if you were to vote yes, you do not want it to be part of it, whether it's part of this or not.
Correct, correct, yeah. Yeah. Tom, did you have something to say? No? All right. I, all right, we'll call the question here. Roll call, please.
Trustee McElvee?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Nay.
Trustee Burson?
Nay.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Good discussion. I'm glad we're moving on. All right, seven C, motion to approve, quote, from Helping Hands IT, for a Dell Power Edge R three sixty server in the amount of eleven thousand sixty-four dollars and twenty-three cents.
So moved, Muncy?
Moved by Muncy.
Second.
Seconded by Williams, discussion?
Just a question.
Sure. Sure.
Um, just generally, if we don't have it at this meeting, maybe the next meeting, just ensuring that such a large expenditure is, is, fits somewhere within the budget. I, I know we weren't, hadn't talked about servers in the budget before.
I wanted to say, the last meeting I said we would use the American Rescue dollars. We have around 45,800 remaining. We would use that for both C and D.
ER buffoons.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, uh, real, real, go ahead, real quickly, Jan.
I'd just like to offer some assurance on the amount of this expenditure because I also questioned it. Um, I questioned it specifically because many, many of the applications that the villages, that the village runs, both village hall and police department, have moved into cloud environments, hosted environments, and are not running on our server today. And so I questioned whether an expenditure of this size was appropriate considering that migration. And I was convinced, um, by the members of the technology committee that the relative difference between a somewhat smaller server and this server was negligible and that what we were really buying was, you know, five, five-plus years of not having to worry about this. And so that is what convinced me.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready? Yep. All right, real call. Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Perfect. Motion passes. And we have 7D, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Well, I just want the public to hear, motion to approve the purchase of Generac, Gen, Generator SG 060 from Kane County in an amount not to exceed 20,000 for village hall. And this is, uh, I believe a six, 60 kilowatt or 60 kilowatt with two switches? I mean, uh, Administrator Rooney and I worked hard on this.
I think Trustee Botner has also looked at it. It's a 60 to 70,000 dollar generator that we're getting for 15 to maybe 18 after we disconnect and transport it over here. So it is a very good deal, but it will kinda push us toward the decision of powering the entire building and going with that large, larger installation for the, and it'll fit the FEMA requirements of a warming and cooling center if needed. So it does kinda, I think Nick has some, he's worked very closely with different contractors to install either a small one on the roof or this one on a pad. But it, it does kinda, I think Nick should speak on this because he's very passionate and helped me a lot on this options.
Yeah, I happen to have some, some knowledge of it in the, kinda my background, but I just figured it would be worth at least presenting the, the board with something to discuss. So, you know, like the retail price of a really similar generator, um, is like 21,000 to the one we're getting from Kane County. Now, it's, it's slightly different, but I couldn't find that exact model, but the same manufacturer, one letter off, I'm not sure what the difference is, is 21,000 new. But there was another way of doing this, and I'm not saying it's better or worse, um, but when the first quotes came out and they were, you know, um, what were they, 130,000, 126,000 dollars? The other quote was 113,000. Um, kinda figured there might be a better way to do it. So we could do a whole generator system and we kinda have to think about what we really need or want to cover in the building. And there's four rooftop units. There's one rooftop unit that takes care of the whole first floor, kinda goes down the main hallway and the vestibule, all the outlets, all the lighting, the servers, and the evidence room. We have a quote for that installation of $50,000 with a new generator and then also another quote of 20, 20, $25,000. So it's worth, you know, kinda talking about that difference because neither of these larger quotes, the 126 or the 108 broke out the actual cost of the generator. Um, it was just a narrative. So we don't really know. I mean, if it was a $20,000 generator in any of these quotes, we're still gonna spend $100,000 because we, we don't know yet. We don't know that that's a $70,000 generator that's in any of these quotes. You know, we don't know what the installation portion of it is. So, you know, it's a beautiful thing to put the whole building on, but it might be a little overkill because we're powering these three other rooftop units, we're covering the neighbors, and we're covering two additional panels. And I mean, $50,000 buys a lot of speed trailers and things that the police department could totally use.
Well, we're, we're gonna have to pay for installation. There's just no way around it. But, um, I, but this is, I mean, working, well, no, working with, uh, Administrator Rooney and I worked with Kane County and this is really a great price. They worked really hard to try to help us acquire this generator. They had to go through the county board and there was a lot of steps to go through. Uh, this generator was originally purchased for the Long Metal Parkway, which is going to be a toll bridge. And, um, the county did receive funds from the state of Illinois and, uh, no longer, it didn't have to be a tollway anymore. It's a free, you know, it's a free bridge pass. So, um, I, I don't know. I have to give kudos to Kane County once again. And Mark, were you gonna say something? No?
No, I think you buy this generator, how you still have to decide how you're gonna power the building.
Sure.
That remains in the installation. That's what Nick's point is. The purchase of the generator allows us to functionally get the generator off the tab, but we're still gonna have to vote on which panels get powered and how. That, that's not decided tonight. Just buying the generator is.
I, I agree with President. I would like to clarify one of the things that she said. Um, because it's, it, may, may, may I ask a question?
I guess. Go ahead.
You had mentioned that the generator, if I, I think you were saying that it came with possibly transfer switches? Is that?
No, two switches.
Two, two transfer switches.
Two, two switches.
Right, so that's an additional value above and beyond the generator. That's why I asked. Because I'd like to clarify that what, what we, what we would be receiving for the amount not to exceed 20,000, I think it's substantially less, isn't it?
Well, we, we have the specs. We did request the specs and they were looked at.
So it's not, so it's not just the generator, there's some additional equipment?
The, the two switch gears are included and we think it's gonna be about 15 for the actual generator and equipment. But if there's any disconnections and costs over at the county when we pull this out by a vendor, we need some money to do that work and then transport that device to us.
So we're getting a little better deal than it might've sounded.
Well, thank you. Yeah. Um, but let me get, Tom, let's, Tom, go ahead.
Nick, do you know what year the generator is or if it has hours on it? Does anybody know?
It's brand new, no hours.
Oh, okay. Well, that makes a huge difference.
Yeah, it's brand new.
Okay. That makes a huge difference.
And then, Ed, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, just glancing down at, um, um, Trustee Botner's documents when he was referring to, to two different generators. Um, I have no familiarity, familiarity with generators and even close to where, um, Trustee Botner does, but the $21,000 generator you're looking at is a residential generator. It's an RG series. This is an SG series. It's an industrial generator. The price gap and it versus, you know, residential versus industrial is significant. Um, I think I would, um, you know, believe or, 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 you know, understand what, what Chief LaVanne and others had said about the value of this thing as an industrial generator. Um, they're, they're quite pricey and I think we're getting a great deal.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Tom, I know.
You know, I, I had a background in this too because I sold generators. Um, just auction results, okay? 2011 used with 400 hours, actually 1998 is the year. It's going, it went for auction results of 11. Just giving you an idea. So, at that same model.
I, I think, we have a, I think you're ready to call the question whether we're gonna buy this at this price.
All right, all right, real call. Trustee McElvy?
Aye.
Trustee Mallett?
Aye.
Trustee Botner?
Aye.
Trustee Burson?
Aye.
Trustee Muncy?
Aye.
Trustee Williams?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Perfect, thank you. Uh, moving on to eight, we have comprehensive plan update from our administrator.
Yes, the, the comp plan is actually a very good document even though it's, it's a little dated of July 2012. I've started reviewing it, uh, you know, there, I think we'll be able to make some CMAP additional updated data points that are in the 2012 to make it current. And I think from the zoning commission and the discussions we've had about the St. Charles potential development to our south in that planning area, we'll need to address some of those. And I think we'll be ready to hit the ground running on that update when you seat a new planning zoning commission in January and, and get them started on this document. Staff, Jim Brown and I will work on some things and it won't be, I'm just telling you, it won't be as long and drawn out and detailed and tedious as the zoning ordinance because it's a good document. You just have to kinda reflect the changes that have occurred and potentially in your planning area outside the village boundaries vis a vis what the development south of 38 looked like or some of the work that Elgin's been doing in the north and the west. So we'll address those and be ready with some staff recommendations for the new commission that's seated in January.
Any questions, discussion? Um, let's see. Uh, 9A was additional, I, uh, excuse me, was KDOT update, coordination route 47. I was going to give an update, but we, Administrator Rooney and I have another KDOT meeting regarding the widening of Route 47, uh, next Thursday.